Hi, this is Samantha reporting for Thunder TV. Another meeting was held on Thursday, January 22 in the Westwood Middle School Gymnasium in reference to the possible merger between Coffey County and Manchester City Schools. This meeting was held by the Manchester City School Board and was open to the public as they made their stance on this possible merger. Let's go find out what they had to say.
Listen Father, it's with grateful hearts that we come before you tonight. Lord, we're thankful for your grace, for your son, for the blessings of this day, and Father for the wonderful opportunity that you give us each and every day to work with the children of our community. Lord, we pray tonight that you may bless us with wisdom, with the ability to say and do things that are pleasing to you, and that, Father, our hearts might be centered on all of the boys and girls with whom we work each day. May our every action, may our every deed, and may our every word show you to other people and be according to your will and your way. In these things we ask you in your name. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Manchester Board of Education, we welcome you to the Joel Benson Gymnasium for this informational meeting. Tonight, we hope to answer questions and clarify misconceptions that you may have had because of remarks that have been made out about a possible transfer of Manchester City to Coffey County. We are convinced of the worth of the Manchester City School District and its value to the students, parents, and our community. We are here to unify for this great cause, and we ask all of you to join with us. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to Director of Schools, Dr. Keith Brewer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The protocol for tonight is I will be making introductions of the board members. If the board members wish to make opening remarks at that time, they'll have a chance to do so. As well as when we call for questions or statements, the board can choose to answer those with their attorney or myself. So anyone on stage can answer any questions for anyone to the best of our ability here tonight. This time, I would like to start to my immediate left. We have Ms. Susan Wood, who is a board member. We have also Mrs. Gregory, Lisa Gregory, who is the next board member. Bypassing the Chair and our attorney, who I'll introduce in a few moments, we have Travis Hillis, Mike Lewis, and our Board Secretary Carolyn Davidson. Does any board member wish to make any opening remarks? If not, then the protocol that we will use, I will ask the question that's been submitted by our staff, and Mr. Miller will answer those questions. There will be a point where we'll switch, and then I'll attempt to answer questions. If I don't know the answer, I have a tendency to make things up and give those to you. Not really, but then we'll go from there. Mr. Miller, the first question for you, and Mr. Clifton Miller is our attorney, is how does Coffey County plan to fund all the educational services for an additional 1,200 students without raising county taxes?
Again, my name is Clifton Miller, and I've been providing board services, or attorney services to the Manchester Board of Education with regard to consolidation. The question before us is a difficult question, and I think a question that probably can be answered for some time in the future. To be honest with you, in most of these consolidation situations, the whether or not consolidation can occur without raising taxes is a question that's not answered until many years into the future. We look at many of the studies that are done on consolidation, especially here in Tennessee. They view these consolidations out five, 10 years into the future, and many of the projections and thoughts about consolidation at the time that there's referendum don't hold true for the what you find out in the future. In order to try to answer this question, I have, Dr. Brewer and I have looked at some of the budget information and tried to give the best we can some hard numbers to this question. We looked at the budget for both the Manchester Board of Education and Coffey County Board of Education and tried to look at it from a different perspective than was portrayed at the last meeting. And we wanted to look at the budgets from a revenue standpoint, what type of revenue would be available for a consolidated school system. One true statement that can be made about this is that theoretically, one consolidated system could be operated for less than two divided systems, I think. And when we talk about potential efficiencies, the key word there is potential. There's a big difference between potential efficiencies and actual savings. And I'll restate something that Mr. Bennett stated the other night, is that the difference between potential efficiencies and actual savings is generally political willpower. And it comes down to whether or not those in a position to make those decisions, and that would be at the city level and at the county level, have the political willpower to turn potential efficiencies into political savings. The studies that we looked at, the AIMS study, and there's also a TASER study in Tennessee, generally tell us that the political will is generally not there. Everyone thinks that there are potential efficiencies, however, on the backside, the actual savings do not come through. Going back to the information that Dr. Brewer and I looked at, we tried to look at the current fiscal year budget for the Manchester Board of Education and look at it from a revenue standpoint. Currently, the Board of Education has projected current year revenues of $12.84 million. Now, all of that money would not transfer in the process of consolidation. We've gone through line by line on the revenues and believe that we have a reasonable estimate of what would transfer over to the county, and that would be $10.28 million out of that potential revenues. So if you look at the county's budget, or the County Board of Education budget, they project for this year having $34.455 million in revenue. If you take those two numbers combined, you could have potential revenues of $44.77 Currently, the county is spending $9,161 per student, according to the last annual report issued by the State Department of Education. It would appear, based on our information, that a consolidated system would have about 5,381 students, and plus or minus, that number fluctuates constantly. But at that number of students with that revenue, the county would have to reduce their per pupil expenditure to $8,320, which is $841 lower than what they're currently spending per pupil, which is 9.2% reduction. So then you have to ask the question that I asked originally, is that is it possible for the county to drop their per pupil expenditures from $9,161 to $8,320 per student? It's theoretically possible. Practically, that's another question. So it's also important to note that Coffey County Board of Education is currently operating in a deficit. According to their current budget, they're operating in a $303,000 deficit. So it seems hard to me that they could make up a current $300,000 deficit and drop their per pupil expenditure $841 in a consolidated system. So can we answer to you definitely that the county can operate a consolidated system without raising taxes? No. I can give you the numbers that I've given to you, and you can decide yourself whether you think that they can make, they have the political willpower to make those changes.
Next question is, how will the transfer of Manchester City schools to Coffey County save the taxpayers of Manchester or Coffey County any money?
This question relates to the first question, and it gets back to a political willpower And it should be kind of divided up into two parts. You have Manchester and you have Coffey County. Both governmental entities will have to have the willpower to convert potential efficiencies into actual savings. If the two systems are consolidated, obviously, the city of Manchester will have an immediate increase of revenue into their budget of $1.67 million. The question is, obviously, what will happen to that money? Will taxes be rolled back, or will that money be plowed back into the budget for some other benefits or services into the county with a payment of debt? At the county level, I think we've kind of answered that question. We don't know. Can the county operate the system, a consolidated system, under the revenues available? And if not, then there would be an increase, there potentially could be an increase in I think the citizens of Manchester have to look at it from the standpoint, if there's no rollback in taxes at the city level, and there's a potential increase in taxes at the county level, then the city, that John Hughes citizen of Manchester could be facing a tax increase and losing their school system in the same way.
Will all the facts needed to make an informed decision be available before the referendum?
I think the easy answer to that is no. This very question was asked by a lady at the city meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I remember sitting there in the audience and thinking to myself, the easy answer is Because as I've said already, is that will potential efficiencies be converted into actual savings? No one can know that. And that's what these two studies have gone back and looked at. Generally, this question, the facts are generally not there until probably five, 10 years down the road, and you see actually what happens.
Is it realistic to expect a consolidation plan to be implemented and executed within a two-month window and have it ready for the start of the 2015-2016 school year that was stated at the last meeting?
Realistically, no. And I will refer to a report done by the Comptroller's Office in March 2012, where the Comptroller's Office reviewed consolidation since 1960 in the state of Tennessee. And the most recent system that was consolidated was not done by referendum, and it's only been included in that. But the previous one was in Harriman County, or actually, it's in Roan County, and Harriman was the city that was losing their school system. The referendum took place in 2001, and the effective time period was for the 2003-2004 school year. At that same time, Covington put up a referendum in 2000 to close their school system and have it consolidated with Tipton County, and that was effective 2003-2004. So in those two situations, one was three years later and one was two years later. In the Chatham and Hamilton County merger, the referendum was in 1994, consolidation again in July of 1997, which was approximately three years later. In the Jackson County, or actually, Jackson City-Madison County merger, the referendum was in 1989, and effective was 1990, so it was practically a year. And in the Knoxville City and Knox County, the vote was in 1986 and followed the following year, 1987. So based on what we've seen in the past in the state of Tennessee regarding consolidation, I think the easy answer to that is no. Right from the beginning, I think that the consolidation plan for two systems can be put together in a matter of two months. In fact, I think it would be difficult to, if a referendum was conducted this year, to get it done by July 1, 2016.
Who will be eligible to vote if this goes to a referendum?
The only citizens that are eligible to vote are the residents of the city of Manchester, those people who currently are enrolled to vote in the city of Manchester elections. County voters are not given a choice in the matter. Constitutionally, the obligation to provide education to the students of the state lies with the state and with legislature. That constitutional obligation has been passed down to the county, but any time that any county has a special school district or city school district within their boundaries, they take over that role. But if that special school district or city school district is consolidated or transferred, then the option falls back to the county, and the county citizen has their vote in the process. This item was outlined by the Comptroller in their 2012 report to the legislature, and the Comptroller had a recommendation to the legislature to look at this particular issue that the legislature has never addressed.
The next series of questions, Mr. Miller, are going to deal with teachers. On transfer or consolidation, does tenure remain intact for teachers that have earned it?
Yes. Tennessee law protects the rights and privileges of teachers in a transfer or consolidation. These rights and privileges by statute includes salary, pension, retirement benefits, and other contractual rights that the teachers have.
Can the Coffey County school system give any assurances that high-performing Manchester City teachers will be able to stay at their current home schools?
No. All teacher assignments are at the discretion of the director by state law. So if there's consolidation of the systems, then all teachers within the current city school system are subject to being moved to some other school at the discretion of the director of the school.
Would the receiving school district be obligated by law to give teachers advance notice of their jobs being abolished and/or being put on the two-year preferred list for reemployment?
I think this question has a legal answer and it has a practical answer. From a legal standpoint, no. But from a practical standpoint, if we look back at the history of consolidation in Tennessee, that's the reason that you see one, two, or three years between referendum and the fiscal year start of a consolidated school system. That way, there's sufficient time to put a plan together and to outline where kids are going to go, how transportation is going to occur, and also deal with the teacher and teacher assignment issues. But there is no obligation by law.
Would the Coffey County school system be required to offer jobs for teachers on the preferred list for reemployment before looking at new hires straight out of college or from another system?
The answer is yes. There's a statutory right under TCA Section 495511 that teachers that are dismissed or their job and their position is no longer available, could be placed on a reemployment list. There is, we have noticed a slight difference in the policy in Coffey County and the statute. The statute provides for the teachers that are on that list for, until they have been rejected for legitimate law reasons. Coffey County's policy is slightly different, so I would, if you might mean that, state statute would control, however, I do see a slight problem there.
Would tenure and seniority be the determining factors on a consolidation with licenses and qualifications being equal?
No. Again, job positions and location of whatever school is subject to the discretion of the director. Teacher assignments and teacher decisions are always at the discretion of the director, who in this case would be the director of the Coffey County Board of Education.
The next two questions pertain to our classified individuals, our custodians, cafeteria workers, maintenance, and so forth, and we've classified those into non-teachers questions. What guidelines, if any, are set for Coffey County's school system for employment of classified staffs such as custodians, cafeteria workers, school security, bookkeepers, teacher assistants, and so forth?
There actually are new guidelines. Classified employees are at will by state law, and they're obviously subject to the pleasure of the director. And so there is no statutory provision, nor is there any policy provision that I can find that would allow them a reemployment list option. If the county decided to do that, then that would be, there could be a reemployment list, but again, that would be at the discretion of Coffey County Board of Education or its
Will full-time classified staff remain full-time?
Again, classified employees are at will, therefore at the discretion of the director. If they're retained, it should be at full-time. But again, the question is whether or not they would be in a consolidated system.
The next series of questions deals with benefits. What effect would consolidation have on insurance benefits on Manchester City school employees?
Insurance benefits do not transfer. Teachers and staff that march, transfer to the new system will have to go into counties' insurance programs and go under their benefit programs.
Will the old Manchester City retirement plan transfer with employees who still carry that plan if that plan carries over? Could you explain, if it carries over, how it would happen?
I presume that this question is related to classified employees that are on the city's retirement plan, and if so, that will be at the discretion of the Board of Mayor and all of the city of Manchester. They have statutory discretion to transfer the funds that are allocated to those employees that transfer to the new system, and transfer those assets to a similar classified employee retirement system at the new district.
Well, if there is a transfer of schools, will the board policy about built-up sick leave days still be in place?
It's my opinion that the answer is no. Since employees will be subject to the policies of the Coffey County Board of Education, if there's any differences between the policies in place at the city of Manchester versus Coffey County, the employees will be subject to the new policies under the new system. And if there is some difference regarding built-up sick leave days, then I think that that's going to be most likely to be lost.
Will sick leave transfer?
Sick leave will transfer. It is a protected right under the statute, so there is, there will, but it will transfer.
And that will be true for our classified employees too?
There is no state law that protects classifieds on that regard. Again, I think there's a legal answer and a practical answer. Like I said, the state law does not protect classified employees or their rights and privileges, but if there's a consolidation and the Coffey County Board of Education decides to provide that benefit to their non-classifieds or their teachers, I think it's reasonable to assume that they would probably provide it to them. There's no legal obligations.
Very good. Let's talk about grants now for a while. I'll ask some questions about that, and it seems to me that we're going tight-timed somewhat. Coordinated school health grants that are received by Manchester City schools, what will happen to that grant?
That grant will be lost by state law. There is only one grant per LEA. Obviously, in a consolidated system, there will only be one. LEA stands for Local Education Association. Since there will only be one LEA, there will only be one grant.
And here in Manchester City, we have the TAP grant. What would occur with it?
That TAP grant will not automatically transfer. We have been in touch with the agency that deals with that, the United States Government, and we've been informed that there is a process by which a new district or new system can apply to have that grant transferred. If they go through that process, then it's possible that that TAP grant will transfer. If they do not go through the federal process, then the answer is no.
The Family Resource Centers, the answer to that question is they would not transfer. However, the Coffey County Board of Education and the Director of Schools could reapply for those grants, and if they were granted, then certainly they would be awarded or could be awarded to Coffey, or to Coffey County. There's no guarantee, though, that those grants would serve the schools that they currently serve here in Manchester City schools. For example, we have Family Resource Incompasses all three schools, but we have it housed at our two elementary schools, Westwood Elementary, and we also have one at the College Street Elementary School. And then if I look at 21st Century Grants, same answer, no, not necessarily. They would have to reapply, Coffey County would. There's nothing that says that they couldn't get those same grants. I'm not sure that they would be for the same schools that is in the Manchester City schools. You've got to understand that if another school district applies for those grants, they have other schools that are involved in the they have other schools that are involved in the transfer, and so it's by their discretion or however the grant's written as to where those grants are going to be awarded for Coffey County in this case. What will happen to an employee whose salary is paid for by grants? Do you want to take that one?
Yes, Dr. Rer. I told Dr. Rer earlier that this may be one of the more difficult questions that was posed, and in my opinion, I don't think it will be controlled over whether or not an employee is paid for by a grant. It will be controlled over whether or not that employee has tenure. If it's a tenured teacher, and Coffey County School System will have to take that tenured teacher at their pay level, because that pay level is protected by statute. And most likely what will happen is that if there are too many teachers, then there'll be a non-tenured teacher that will be let go, so they'll handle it in that fashion. Whether or not their pay is paid for by some type of grant, I don't think it will be controlled by that.
Good. We're going to look at programs now. I will attempt to answer these questions that have been submitted by our staff and parents. Manchester City Schools has a much higher percentage of English language learners than the county system. What will happen to our ELL services, and again, that's English language learners, if the two systems consolidate? Naturally, you would go under the Coffey County's policy that deals with ELL students. However, in the BEP, you would probably gain some teachers Coffey County would. Those teachers that we currently have, several, it's my opinion that they would be funded on those through the BEP, but you would conform to their policy as to how the ELL programs are run at that time. What will happen to the Manchester City School System's program for gifted students? Again, we have a gifted program for our school district. However, when you transfer or consolidate, then you automatically come under the receiving school district's policy and for the way they do their gifted program, and there is a difference. It's dependent on the district and how they serve the needs of those gifted students. It is a state statute or in the law for special education. We have the distinction of being one of the few states, maybe the only state, that has gifted covered under the Special Education IDEA Act. So there has to be a gifted program that would exist. I'm assuming in this case that we would be under their program, and it will look somewhat different from what we offer here in Manchester City if the consolidation takes place. How does the Coffey County School System propose to provide similar special education services to their students with special learning needs? They must, they'll look at the IEPs, they'll convene an IEP team meeting, but again, there's nothing there that says they have to do it exactly in the law as Manchester City Schools does. Manchester City Schools has an exemplary program for its, for its special education population. It's been recognized by the state. We spend, if you look at the budget, we will spend more money for our students receiving special, students with disabilities receiving services based on their IEP, but we have also practiced a lot of inclusion in our district too. And the state's recognized our district as exemplary. They may have done the same thing for Coffey County, I'm not certain of that, but those services would then go to Coffey County's framework, and they do not have to be similar as long as they meet the needs of those particular students with disabilities, and that's based on the IEP. Here's various other questions that were asked. We may have already addressed this, but if you're eligible for tenure this year, will you still receive that recommendation for tenure this school year before transfer takes place? If the Manchester City Schools transfer to the county system, would tenured teachers have a job placement over non-tenured teachers? Let me just tell you how the tenure law works. If you receive tenure here in this district and you're hired by Coffey County, they will, after a two-year probationary period, and this is statute, then the superintendent, upon the recommendation of that principal, would recommend to the school board, in this case, if we're consolidating to Coffey County, and they would either award tenure by majority vote, or they would deny tenure. Now, the tenure law, study has changed, and it changed after 2011. Heretofore, before 2011, you had three years, and then if you were recommended, went through the recommendation process, you got tenure. Those teachers that got tenure in that particular situation would still follow under, fall under those same rules, but you still have a probationary period in that particular receiving school district. Those teachers who do not receive tenure, if you're hired by the receiving district, they'll handle you just like a transfer, and you would carry your evaluations over, let's say you were three years and you have to have five years under the new tenure law. If you had two years to go, then they would look at your past evaluations, but the last two evaluations is the ones that are important. You've got to make a composite score of four or five, two consecutive years, so that's the fourth year and the fifth year. If you do not receive that four or five, then you will not be eligible for tenure, and you become an at-will employee. Now, somewhere in that process, if you can get fours or fives for two consecutive years, then you can be back, brought back before the board with the recommendation of the superintendent and majority vote of the board and receive tenure. So you don't lose those evaluations, and that's true during, if it's, if a system is consolidated or not. You're going to be looked at as a transfer teacher, all dependent on if you're hired by that school district. If you do not receive a four, or five, or tenure, you become an at-will employee. That doesn't mean that they will automatically terminate you at the end of the year. You may get a letter that says your contract ends at that period, at the end of the school year, but they can rehire you back. So it's possible a teacher could have a thirty-year career and never get tenure in this state. Now, let me address the, the other part of it. If you have tenure, are you, if you get the four and five scores, it doesn't matter if you're in our district currently and you're up for tenure, the board has to go through the process of recommending you for tenure. Now, the board can either vote that up or down. If they vote, denied you tenure, then we would let you, we would not keep you on, in the school district. They would probably terminate you. It seems to me that if a teacher has tenure, or if they have acquired tenure this year, that the principal and the superintendent is obligated to recommend those teachers or teacher to the Board of Education, and it's my opinion that if they meet those requirements and they have those recommendations, that they should vote for tenure for those, those teachers. So I think it would be highly unlikely if you're to be awarded tenure or you're up for tenure in this system if we didn't react to that. Will iPads, will iPads be taken away from the sixth and seventh graders at Westwood Middle School or provided for all sixth and seventh graders of Coffey County? Well, I assure you, they won't be awarded to all, make no mistake, the sixth and seventh graders in Coffey County unless they're willing to have a political will to pay for those iPads. Now, the way we're paying for the iPads is that we're leasing them. My opinion, they do not have to keep those at the middle school, as long as there's a lease there and bear that expense. If we have those paid for, and we will have some of those paid for if the consolidation takes place, if it takes two or three years, we may have them all paid for, then they would go to Coffey County. Seventh, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. That doesn't mean they stay here at Westwood Middle School. That does not mean that the new middle school that's, that they just built, that they're going to get all new iPads. They may have all new iPads now. They may have some type of electronic device that they're having instructional technology What vision will the WMS athletic teams compete in? I have no earthly idea, but if they're going to compete in what Coffey County has, and I'm here to say that whatever Chad Dyer and Coach Pennell and Coach Westmoreland and Coach Dyer, whatever they recommend, I'd be on for it if the consolidation takes place. If they stay with us, then I know what conference they will be. So it'd be, so sports, I think it's a little bit cloudy as to what, what the county does with that. I know you have an AD in the county, as well as we have an AD here at the middle school, and the middle school's AD will determine what conference you're going to play. Coffey County School System questions? I'm not sure that I would be accurate with some of those. Some of it, I'll, I'll say that I actually don't know. What programs does Coffey County offer? I have no idea. I think there's some that they offer that are the same as we do. There's some that I believe they don't offer at their elementary schools or middle schools. Let me give you an example. It seems to me that I recall that art is not at every school. I think they have an art teacher, maybe several art teachers that is a system-wide teacher, so they're going to several schools throughout the, the district in Coffey County as it is now. As you know, we have art at all three of our schools. We have music at all three of our schools. Here at the middle school, we have drama and theater. I'm not sure at the middle school, the new one, that they have that. They could. And then we have a lot of programs in the elementary schools, the maker labs and other things that we fund through grants that they would not have and would not have if they consolidate our school district. What is the expanding student population in the county versus the city? We have a high concentration of expanding population at all of our schools, but the highest is at Westwood Elementary School. I'm not sure how many county has. I'm not sure how many county instructional assistants that the county has. They do offer English language learners or the ELL services to their students in the county. Extended school program, we offer it at two of our schools, and that's our elementary schools. I do not believe that Coffey County offers it to all its elementary schools. When I monitored and checked that the last time, it was probably the site, they had sites at two schools. Is preschool offered at each school? To my knowledge, we're the same there. We do offer preschools. They do offer preschool there, that's by application. They apply each year, and you have a categorical grant that's given out. That used to be somewhere around a hundred and ten-plus thousand dollars. It's my belief that if our school system is consolidated, that they would apply for preschool grants again, and I'm sure if the money was, happened to be there with the state level, that they would, they would receive preschool grants that would cover our district. Will schools be rezoned if consolidation is considered? That's left totally up to the Director of Schools of Coffey County and the school. What textbooks are they using in math, science, English, and language arts? Have no idea. We use the best that's out there, and I say that a little bit with tongue-in-cheek, and I'm sure their textbooks are, are good too. What I can say to you is that we adopt on-site usually. This, this year was a little bit of exception, but every six years, we're going to adopt the math and science and English language art books that correspond to the state standards, that align with the state standards. How long will it take to increase wages for city teachers? Well, you heard what was said at the last information meeting and that the city and board and mayor involved in that. Their plan is, I understood it, would be that they would freeze, if a consolidation took place, they would freeze your, our teachers' salaries until they could bring the other teachers' salaries up. Now, I have, I have an opinion about that, but I won't express that tonight because I want it to be information, and I think we presented the information tonight to you that is true information to the best of our knowledge. But I will say this, I think it's unfair to freeze teachers' salaries, my teachers' salaries of our school district, until the others are brought up. What should be done is that all teachers should be brought up at the same time, and that any salary improvements going forward, all teachers should receive those. I don't think that we should discriminate, and I would not discriminate if I were Director of Schools, nor would I recommend that to my school. But that probably is an option that they can take and will take just because of the economic landscape of, of the county as well as the city. Ask what will happen to our outstanding teachers that MCS is currently employed but are not tenured? I think I answered that question a while ago, but those teachers, if they're hired in the Coffey County system, if they only have two years or three years of evaluations in our system, they would still, they brought those evaluations over, and then they would have three years, two more years to go before they would have a chance to be awarded tenure. And that would be true of any transfer student or transfer teacher that's going to any district in the state. Let's see, who will ensure, on the assumption that the county will inherit our three school buildings and leave Manchester with, with the debt, which they say is twelve million dollars, what happens with the smaller items within the buildings? Desks, L molds, projectors and such, that would be transferred to Coffey County. Anything that we have, that we own, desks, teacher supplies that are left over, they would either be used by the existing teacher in that school district, but they would all be Coffey County's. Everything would transfer over that is not leased to Coffey County School District.
One comment I'll have on that is that the buildings are owned by the City of Manchester, and if there is no Manchester City School System, it would obviously be controlled then at that point by the City of Manchester. The City of Manchester and Coffey County Board of Education is going to have to enter into some type of negotiations for the lease of these buildings, and so there's an expenditure... And so there's an expenditure that the Coffee County Board of Education is going to incur and that's not in any budget, has never been in any budget to date, and was not even considered at all, we looked at and announced earlier.
Two last questions, and then I'll turn the meeting back over to the Chair. Will there be three volunteer pre-Ks and two special education pre-Ks if the system stays the same? And I'm assuming we're talking about Manchester City School District. Well, I know we are. It's helpful to work with the numbers that I know, so. Coffee County really controls that? There's nothing that says that they have to have two pre-Ks, nor is there anything that says they have to have three volunteer pre-Ks? Coffee County controls that. My belief is that if they want to serve the kids, all the students in our district that have disabilities, that qualify for pre-K and also for the volunteer pre-K, that that would be the right thing to do in that. But Coffee County controls that. All of county elementary, A special ed, CDC, that's Comprehensive Development Classes at Deerfield, will our special education students who are CDC, will they remain down placed in schools or with the same teachers and aides? Again, that's going to be a decision that Coffee County Board of Education, if consolidation takes place, and the Director of Schools. Certainly if you have a pattern of where you're transporting your students to a CDC class at one location, that may still, that may still do that with our students if there's consolidation takes place. I think that's all the questions that have been submitted to me. I'll now turn it back over to the Chair.
Okay, do we have any comments from the audience?
Pardon my voice, because I didn't hear you talk this week. Know that I've been suffering from a horrible case of strained lungitis from yelling at my daughter's basketball game last week. Go Eagles! The rest of you, I realize this was a barrel of laughs up here, let's get a little more pumped up. Don't give up on this. Don't, don't give the body language you're giving right now. I would prefer that the word used would have been "would" instead of "will" by everything that they addressed here. I know that they started off by saying, "If we consolidate, then it will," but I'd rather say "would if we consolidate." So, let's don't give up. Let's don't believe this is going to happen. You control whether this is going to happen or not. Just making my point real quick, everybody knows or doesn't know, I'm, what's my crack already here? Know that I, I'm not a resident of Manchester. I don't pay taxes in Manchester. I'm a Coffee County resident, but my kids go to Manchester City Schools. I made the decision six years ago when we put my first daughter in school. It was the right decision then. My dad made the decision 50 years ago when I started elementary school with it, up in County, and he said, "No, he'll get the better education in the city." So, the same thing that he'll trip him back then, he didn't have this data to go by. He just knew, he knew what he knew. So, it's still true today. So, yeah, your dad all went up, and I am the oldest parent in schools. I do have a five-year-old that's getting ready to terrorize you all next year, so keep that in mind too. Just a few points I want to make here. First off, I hate that the press, I don't think it's a press or not, I think the press is not represented like they were last week. I pointed out to them in a couple of meetings that I've been to this week, that our silence doesn't mean we concur with what's going on. And to please remember the line between the front page and the editorial page, ones for facts, the others for opinions. Last week, the report on last week's meeting was not completely factual, and they said that we concur to that because only a couple of us got up here and talked before the mayor cut us off. We don't concur. We don't believe this is the right thing. The press shouldn't have stepped us for that. I was coming up here with data. I've been away pretty much the past two weeks because I got attack mode after last week, and I said, "Okay, they gave us with an hour's worth of data," and we couldn't respond to that. There's no way to get up here and respond to anything other than data, and it sounded like we're kids arguing. I told you what it sounded like when we got up here and tried to argue with the lawyer up here. I want to point out, and I have received just tonight, those reports that he kept referring to, and he definitely wanted to lean on the 2,300 or $3,000 difference per student. Everybody needs to get that report, that aimed report, the city councilman need to see and read that aimed report from front to back. It does not recommend consolidation. As a matter of fact, it talks about all the pitfalls of consolidation and how few success stories there are in consolidation. So this is not an automatic, showing the city taxes. Your city taxes, if we're out 1.67 million dollars of less than we need from the city, your city taxes should go down 85 cents on your property taxes. Do any of you really believe that your taxes are going to go down 85 cents? Our city continues to struggle to pay their own bills. Every year they struggle to pay their bills. This money will be absorbed somewhere else in the city. You won't see this money. Coffee County taxpayers, if you believe this is going to happen without raising your taxes, you're mistaken. There's no way you can take on this body, the number of buildings, the programs that the state mandates you take on without raising your taxes. I came in here to be really, I was going to be really argumentative tonight. The city council, I've been in a couple of meetings with them the past week. I've talked to all of them on the phone, and I've talked to most of the school board members. The city council right now gives a story that they're trying to resolve this without referendum. They're working with the Board up here, they're looking for budget cuts, they're trying to resolve this without turning over the taxpayers. As someone said in the meeting of the night, "I don't believe the taxpayers are informed with the objective data necessary to make this decision." There's a lot of emotion, and you'll never see all the necessary data to make this decision. It will be an emotionally driven decision. I'm going to go quickly here. To those, and I read it, I'm amazed, I'm always amazed, social media, that you post pictures of your lunch and things like that, but this past weekend I was amazed at the fights going on online about these schools are better, our schools are better, our schools are better, our schools. I kid you, love your schools. We love our schools. You defend yours to the death? We defend ours to the death. You need to get the emotion out of it and compare the real data. Go and do what I did and spend some time looking at the data. For someone to stand up here and say, "The schools are the same, that we educate our kids the same," go to schoolbeater.com, I believe the other, just type them in Google and type in ranked school districts of Tennessee, and look at that data. You'll be amazed. If you're a county taxpayer, you'll be angry. All but a couple of schools, you're going to be mad because you've been told it's the same, yet you have schools that rank nearly in the bottom 10% of the state. Manchester City Schools don't fit in that moment. There's one of two, there's two of the county schools. There's two of the county, I'm just mainly elementary schools right now because it's from my kids. Two of the county elementary schools rank right up there in the, there's 850 elementary schools in Tennessee. Two of the county schools rank up there in the 200s with number three ranking in the state, Westwood Elementary School. And just behind us, Coffee City, I win. So there's two schools, and I could have told you. I could have told you before I started the research that there are two schools definitely at the top along with us. There are two schools that ride kind of in the middle. They're in the 400s or so in the state rankings. And there are two schools that, gee, if my kids went there, I'd be mad, I'd be angry that they rank nearly 700 out of 850 schools in the state. How is that the same? It's not the same. I watched, I watched the arguments all the weekend, and people say, "Well, you've got the same programs you do," and then in the same sentence they'd say, "But we deserve to have the program that you've got." So I'm like, "Okay, do you have the same programs we do, or don't you?" Once again, objectively compare it. The city school board last Friday in their minutes have a little listing of all of the programs available for the students of Manchester City Schools. Coffee County Schools needs to make that same thing available. If there's a consolidation here, you're going to lose many of those programs. The grants to find those programs are going to go away. The taxes aren't going to support those programs. The iPads are an excellent example. The kids here have an unbelievable research tool, and without raising taxes even more, the county's not going to provide iPads. Those iPads are not going to be available to the students to take home and do their For the county folks that are arguing against us, you don't really have a dog in this fight any more than you would have a dog in the Franklin Schools or the Brentwood Schools. This is between the taxpayers of Manchester, which I'm not, and the school systems. This is not for Coffee County. Don't believe that going ahead and absorbing Manchester City Schools will get your kids all of those programs. It's not. You're not going to get those programs unless they raise taxes substantially. The $2,300 difference, there's got to be full disclosure on that before this goes to a referendum. Right now, they sat up here last week and made it sound like it was just clear cut. County can educate them, $2,300 of less than the city does. Doesn't take into account those massive ELL, ELL programs. I can tell you, Coffee County Schools have about 1.5% Hispanic students. Manchester City Schools have over 10% Hispanic students. Our requirement is much, much greater than that. That's got to be paid for. Even if you go to the county, that's got to be paid for. The same with the special education program. We rank about 23% of the students in the special education program. The county schools, 13%. If you go there, you've got to absorb that. Those taxes are going to go up. So, worth the $2,300 breakdown, somebody needs to give us full disclosure on that before any kind of referendum happens. The Board of Mayor and Alderman. Show some compassion for what you're putting this community through. Show some compassion to the teachers who, the other night I sat there and watched you argue and fight so hard for a 1% raise for the city employees because the city employees deserve it. And I looked around at the teachers in the room who had been angry, but now they're just about in tears because they're thinking, "Aren't we city employees?" So the time you're fighting drastically for these other, you know, I'm not cutting their raise, I don't want, I don't want anyone to do with their raise, but show some compassion to these city teachers. Show some compassion to what you're putting this community through. It is affecting the classroom. Five and six-year-olds are asking, "What's going on? Am I going to lose my school? Am I going to lose some things?" My five-year-old wonders, "Do I get to go to school at Westwood, or do I have to go to that school that ranks nearly number 700 in the state?" She'll go to private school, of course she will. To the governing bodies of Coffee County, Manchester, Telomah, and the city school systems, quit suing one another. Goodness gracious, stop that. Who wins in that? I tell you who wins, the attorneys win in that. But nobody else wins. A sues B, B sues C, C sues A. The attorneys win, and the taxpayers pay for all of that. Ask the residents of Telomah. They won a big lawsuit against Coffee County, 1.5 million dollars or something. The county's been struggling to pay for that lawsuit. The citizens of Telomah are having to pay the city of Telomah for a third of that. Stop suing one another. Forget the past. The money that you didn't get in the past, you made without, you made do without. You didn't even know it was there until somebody pointed out to you that it was there. Forget it, let it go. Work from the future, make sure you get those funds in the future, but forget the past. The taxpayers are losing, and you guys are losing from those fights. Now, I must admit, the city school system has agreed to drop their lawsuit on the City of Manchester, and I believe they're recommending dropping their lawsuit against Coffee County. The other bodies of Coffee County need to follow that same guidance. That graphic on the front of the paper was ridiculous. When you looked at everybody at seven, everybody, I don't see how anybody makes any money in, except for the lawyers. The Manchester School Board, I work for the government, I'm a contractor for the government. I have to turn in budgets on time every year. Turn your budgets in on time. If you've got a problem with them, go work it out with the city, but don't spend four months trying to get an attorney's opinion. It's made the Board of Mayor and Alderman mad. It's one of the things that's driving what's going on right now. That and the lawsuits are driving personality conflicts. As much as the mayor sat up here and said, "No, it's not about anything like that," we all know, everybody knows what's going on there. Two things to remember there. Know which side your bread is buttered on, and you get more flies with honey than you do with vinegar. We're about done here, and I'm going to tell you, there's a way that you control this. There's a way that we can keep this from happening. Right now, I want to depend on the city and the Board to work out their differences and to keep this from referendum, but hope for the best, plan for the worst. I've got a way, I guarantee you, you can defeat this. What I need you to do, I need everybody to give me 10 minutes over the next week and make sure and register to vote. You control this. There's 1,200 students in the Manchester City School System. If you look at the parents, grandparents, friends, relatives who agree with your position on Manchester City Schools, that's a voting body of probably better than 2,500. There's only 5,000 registered voters in Manchester, and less than 30% of them typically vote in an election. You as a body can get together and you can control this. Take control of this. If you want this to go your way, take control of it. It's easy to register to vote. You can go online and do it. I'm going to make sure that all three schools and the Board have those forms available there, and I'll call today to make sure that it's okay for me to set up a voter registration drive in the front of each school. We're going to do that. We're going to call PAT to help us do that. We're going to make it easy for people to register to vote. 2,500 strong, if you'll get out and vote, you'll win this. You can beat this. So, hope for the best, plan for the worst. I'm done. I have two, closing two points to remember. One, they're not the same. I wish Coffee County Schools the best. I have to be a member of Coffee County Schools at some time, and I hope that they can improve those schools that are suffering right now. It's not fair to those folks. The people that don't like that, they need to go complain, not to us, online, Facebook, social media, all that. Go complain to your elected representatives, go complain to your school board. If you want the programs Manchester has, if you want the standards Manchester has, if you want a principal like Tom Furman who goes out and gets millions of dollars in grand, make it happen. You control your own destiny in this. Take charge of it.
I agree with everything he said, so thank you. My name is Chris Mills, if most of you obviously know who I am. If you don't, what I teach, I teach Manchester City School Kids, that's what I teach. But secondly, I'm a music teacher and I have Westwood Elementary. And I just want to verify a few points because Dr. Brewer's, all the questions he brought up, or that was brought up to him. In the county, they do not have art in the elementary school at all. They do have music that travels between a couple of schools, and they have PD that travels through a couple of schools. Now, think about that in terms of connection. I feel privileged to be at the school I am because I'm there all the time. The kids have to put up with me all the time, but I make connections. I had a former teacher come up to me a few days ago, and she said, "I ran..." I had a former teacher come up to me a few days ago, and she said, "I ran into one of our former students." Now, I only had this student for two years when I first taught him. He was in fifth grade, and I had him in sixth grade. I was one of the few people that he asked about. Now, I never had him in anything but general music class. He was in one of my plays I did, but that was it. He didn't do band, he didn't do chorus. That's all he ever did. He didn't do music in the middle school, he didn't do anything in the high school. But he remembered who I was. And that made me feel proud to be part of the school system because all of us make connections with these kids. And I think the fact that we have these art teachers, we have these music teachers, it gives us much more well-rounded students. Because my son, if I work out... If my son wasn't in the school system, he would not realize the potential that he has. And it hurts me to see some of these teachers that I've heard, in some of these schools, that actually want this consolidation. They think, "I actually heard through the grapevine, I'll just use the grapevine, but I did hear from a very reliable source, what has Manchester City School given me?" Okay, well, one thing, they gave me a job, so I should be proud of that. I've been here for 18 years. I've lived in this area for eight years. So this is the only school I've ever taught in Tennessee. And I don't plan on leaving anytime soon, which, you know, could be a bad thing, but the guys have dragged me out of here, so... But I feel that if my son didn't go to the school, and he didn't have art in elementary school, he would not realize his potential. Because those of you that have very soon, you know how good of an artist he is. And he didn't get that from me. I'm not an artist. And he didn't get it from me genetically either. And of course, I feel, I feel strongly for the school. If people don't fight for the school, if you think Manchester City Schools has nothing to offer to me, then why are you here? You know, this is a passionate place. I work with teachers that I am proud to work with. I work with personnel that I'm proud to work with. Okay, I work with people that, we have connections outside of the classroom. Okay, we're friends. And to see my friends have to worry about their jobs simply because people can't get along, and they wanna fight about this stuff, then I think it's up to us to tell our teachers, to tell our parents, to tell our community. There are people in the community that don't know what's going on in here. They've seen in the paper, the schools want to consolidate, they think, "Oh, we're gonna lose taxes." Okay, the county, over the summer, wanted to shut down the libraries, because they wanted to save money. Because they felt the libraries were an unnecessary monetary risk. Okay, well, if the libraries are an unnecessary monetary risk, and they have to close those down to make money, what does that say when they're gonna have to bring in a school system that's this large? And try to think how, if they can run the libraries, it's gonna be harder than to run three more schools. Okay, it's just no doubt. I think that, whether you're a parent who's here now, or you're a parent who, I can't vote unfortunately, I don't live in this, I don't live in the city either, I live in Tallahassee, sorry. But I feel that we need to let people know. If they work downtown, and they have nothing vested in this school, they still have something vested in this county. And I don't know about you, but it was said, taxes never go down. It's not gas prices, people, taxes don't go down. I have never seen taxes go down, ever in my life. Okay, and if they do, they go up somewhere else. Okay, it's never, it's never an uneven thing. Okay, it always balances out. I guess that's all I have to say. And I do thank you for listening. I do want people to realize that they're, if you're worried about, if they have the same programs, they don't. Okay? And so many people would lose positions, and these kids would suffer for it. Okay, they would not get better, it would get worse. And that's, that's the reality of it. There's no way it's gonna get better. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Valerie Lemons, and I am a city taxpayer. I want to say that I am, I've lifted everything, and I am against the referendum. So when I ask you this, I want you to know that ahead of time. I have currently four children, three of them that have gone through the gifted program. One of them, hopefully soon, will be here, and will be going through the ELL program as well. So this is very important to me, and for my children. At Monday's meeting, there was a lot of hostility between, mostly, I felt, my opinion, from the Alderman to you. Some back at me. One thing that was brought up is that we need a leader. Somebody has to lead us out of this situation, out of where we're headed. Whether it be the Alderman who has to get us out of there, whether it be you that have, in my opinion, have to help save the schools that I'm proud of, and that I want my children to continue to be with, and I want to be involved with. So my question, if you can answer a question, if this is only for comments, then I want you to take it. How do you plan to lead? How do you, the Manchester School Board, that I voted for, some of you, some of you I didn't, sorry to say. How do you plan on working for me and leading me, a citizen that pays taxes, and all of these teachers that you employ? How do you plan to lead us out of this situation? Honestly, I don't see it coming from our Alderman. I do, I have not, the ones that I saw, I do not feel are gonna step up and lead this. And so now I look to you. And I wanna know, how do you plan to lead?
That's one, that's one area I don't have a problem with, as far as helping to lead. I have a tendency sometimes to jump out in front of the train if I need to. I have every intention to work with Alderman, just like the rest of these folks do. We actually had this meeting tonight because it was already planned and scheduled, but I think we're in the right direction with this consolidation and transfer going the way. That's what we're hopeful for. We've just gotta get together and crunch some numbers, as we have planned to do that. And I think the day of that meeting is when, Dr. Brewer?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. We're gonna do it. And what we did was, one of the reasons why I brought up the fact that I wanted to join me with the Board of Mayor and Alderman, it's just simply because, I look at it real simple. If my wife ignores me, that means I've not paid enough attention to her, and I need to fix that. So I just relate, my professional life, everything that I do, I just, I'm a very common person, and I'm very transparent. So when I've made a mistake, which I've made, I wanna fix it. And I'm not waiting on anybody up here to fix my problem, because of you and everybody out here is my problem. You know, and that's, I don't get paid to be here. I chose to do this because I have a son in the system, and I believe in the school system. And, you know, Keith fired me up tonight, just so you know. I'm sort of in a little bit of a battle, but I guess I don't need to do that. But I intend to do everything that I can to communicate, to show what we offer this city, and to express to the Board of Mayor and Alderman exactly why I don't think it needs to go to a referendum. Regardless of what we can give them, you know, monetarily, we can give them a million dollars, and, you know, two years from now, they might be back another million. But, you know, what I wanna give them is, is to sort of give them the yellow brick road to many successful people, you know, out there. Now, I, for one, was not a city person, you know, I was a county boy. But I married a city girl. She's made me smarter, so I... But I can tell you, just by sure, being there, being available, answering the hard questions, we're gonna make this right. Because I am just as guilty as anyone up here for not giving information when it should've. I don't have access to that information unless I go ask for it. But we have had discussions as a board about that, and that will not be happening anymore. We're not gonna be any more speed bumps to this issue. And I personally apologize to you and to everybody out here that we've had this struggle. You know, we've had this issue. But we're gonna, I'm doing what I need to do to fix that, and I know these folks up here with me are as well. And that's, that's how I can answer your question. Just by pure getting in there, elbows down, and let's go at it, and see if we can work it out. Because I think we can.
We wanna, one of the things we said the other night is, it's time to stop throwing rocks, and take a positive stance, figure out what can be done to help and to serve. And I believe that's our commitment, instead of just a knee-jerk reaction. But let's look at this and work together, move ahead, to help Manchester City Schools be all that can be, and all of it, all that we all want to be. And on top of it, Keith challenged everybody in this room to do, and everybody you know, contact your Alderman. Call them, email them, visit them. They need to know how you feel. They need to hear from you. And they need to know that you aren't a voter. That's important. Please, let them know how you feel. If you're a tuition parent especially, let the Alderman know that you pay extra to participate in the school system, and how valuable this is to you. That means something. All I hear is then, they're talking about the comments that they're receiving, the phone calls, emails. They need to hear from, they need to hear from all of us.
Let me just ditto what has been said, and what I have made the offer to do, something similar to what Murfreesboro City Schools do. I think Tallahassee City does some of this. But Murfreesboro City has an ex officio that they, that's a city councilman, and they invite them to their board meetings, to be part of their board meetings, to interact with the board, and to have input with the board. Now, they're non-voter, but at least they're gonna have a knowledge. And the way I see it, if they would take their minutes, and back to their respective city council meetings, when they call the role about the Alderman giving a report from the water, and from the police department of safety, they can do the same thing for the school district. So they're exchanging minutes, and I would like that to be reciprocal. I'd like to know, you know, what they do at City Hall. I'd like for my board to know that. I'd like for them to be able to, you know, see their budget as well as us see theirs. I think that will show, not only symbolically, but especially to the Mayor and Board of Alderman, that this school board, and this director of schools, is willing to work with them, but it's reciprocal. We both need to have that attitude.
I wanted to say that I think this next Thursday meeting, joint meeting, will be a start, but we also need everybody that can come out and support, because, and the calls, and the emails, and just visiting the Alderman and Mayor, and hopefully that will stop everything to where we don't go to referendum.
Is this Thursday meeting open? Is it an open meeting?
Yes, everybody can.
When, and where?
Thursday at the Mayor and Alderman, at the City Hall.
The boardroom?
Boardroom, by 3:00.
I'm saying that, honestly, I'm gonna echo what, on echo what all the board members have said, that they're ready to work with the city council, and we hope they're ready to work with us. It's a very complicated situation. There are a lot of legal issues that have to be addressed, have to be addressed carefully. I'm looking out at the room, and I see, at least two people I see are former school board members, maybe not in Manchester City, but there are laws that govern how school boards work, and how what, how they govern the schools, there are laws that govern what the city council can do. It's gonna take some time to sort through all these legal issues. I hope everybody will be patient. As Pat said, it might even might, we need to stop the knee-jerk reactions, and we need to carefully look at all of our issues. But I think we're all ready to do that. I love Manchester City Schools. I always have. I'm a father of Manchester City Schools. When I got married and bought a house, I said, "I want to live in the city," because I want to go to City Schools. And I don't apologize for that. And I hope that a couple of things of good will come out of this. I hope that our Board of Mayor and Alderman will realize what an asset this system is to our community, and that we will... And we build our plans based. And I also hope that parents and community members, obviously, we have, we pique their interest, I think, in Manchester City Schools. And I hope that that will raise our local fears. I hope it will raise awareness that people may want to serve on the school board in the future. This past election, it was a, we didn't have any opposition. And that makes for an easy election, but I hope that people's awareness has been raised. This is an important, it's an important position. And I'm not trying to brag, I'm just saying, the school system is important, it's important, and we need people who are willing to serve. I do hope, in the end, something, some good things will come of this.
My name is Arcana Bremer, and I do not draw a paycheck for Manchester City Schools, but I do work for Manchester City Schools. I'm their student. I want to say thank you for you gentlemen up here, because no matter what happens, and I've been wanting to party, what did not happen, you guys have a hard job, and our Alderman have a hard job, and our county is going through a hard time. And you either get stronger for a hard time, or you learn to brush. Let's be strong and get through this. We as citizens are guilty of it. We'll go out to date, you know, we spend our tax dollars here, that helps the situation. The more we spend here in our community, makes it more fun and easier for you guys up here, and it keeps the Alderman, and it helps us. Not guilty of it. Hey, guys, let's, let's remember, we need to keep as much as we can at home. Second thing, I have spent a week looking for the report that Mr. Bennett, or Attorney Bennett, kept referring to. I did numerous internet searches under names, and I looked, and last night, when I said I'm finished, I don't know what he did, by the grace of God, I knew what popped up the first time in search of you. You, if you have a pencil and a piece of paper, need to write down, "Association of Independent and Musical Schools, School Consolidation." Mr. Bennett was so grateful and read so much from this report, that if you were here last Friday night, you will realize that he has given us a very valuable tool. When I found this last night, and everybody else to bed, and I sat up and I read this. I'd given Mr. Holt a copy of this, and I advised him that he would be assured that the Alderman had received this copy, the entire time of this whole thing that Mr. Bennett so graciously introduced us to, as opposed to what they're trying to do. I sat with the grandmom today to ask me what this is all about, and I gave her my page. my opinion, and then I pulled out this report, and we started going through it. She cried a little bit, I cried a little bit. She said, "Arcana, I understand now, but this is not an issue." There's a reason that these schools don't consolidate. There's a reason charter schools are born, smaller, sometimes, instead. There's also another report, that if you get a chance to, I would like for you to pull up. It's named under the search engine, if you will put in Tennessee Advisory Commission on Intergovernmental Relations, and then put in School System Consolidation. This is our armor, guys. You have somebody who asks you, "Why, is it better?" These reports are out here giving you the information. Now, I'm going to tell you, and you're going to say, "Well, these reports are old. One of them's 2005, the other one's 2004." They're old because this does not happen. If you don't have a non-performing school, and you do not have an insolent school system or city system, this does not happen.
This lady brings up an important point, and I've got the AME study right here in front of me, and I'll read you a couple of highlights that she did read to you from. The point she makes is very good, is that the AME study was cast in light a week ago that it was pro-consolidation, and it's quite the opposite. Page 10, the article asks a question, "What happens when school districts are consolidated?" They talk about, some of, some good outcomes can result from consolidation. In the local circumstances, some of these benefits are cost savings, better building utilization, cost benefits, building maintenance, elimination of zoning, tenant's problems, et cetera. It goes home to state that these potential benefits, however, need to be weighed against some very formidable, actual, or potential problems. I'm not going to read the content of all these, but I'm going to read you bullet points. Number one, costs go up. Number two, taxes go up. Three, the social ramifications. Four, competitive edges lost. Number five, lighthouse districts may disappear. We had the first gentleman who took the podium pointed that out, about how certain schools here are lighthouse schools or lighthouse districts. Number six, support for public education may decline. Number seven, frustrations increase. Number eight, public satisfaction decreases. Number nine, labor and contractual arrangements may present problems. Number 10, local identity and control are lost. For any, anyone who wants it, you can call me, I'll email you a copy, and I think, okay, I think the school, for anybody who wants to see it, I think the school administration's going to post a link to this article, straight off the Manchester City School website.
We're going to actually put the two reports, Arcana talked about, on the City School.
I have one more thing to say, and I'm done. I got to get to a basketball game. But I wanted to tell you that you guys know who you are, I won't name you, because I don't want to embarrass you, but there's some teachers that are sitting in the room who have been wearing out your local officials in regards to why this does not need to occur. And they, they're not president of no organization, they're not, you know, they don't do anything but just teach. And so I wanted to say to them, "Thank you so much. Thank you for giving me the strength myself to help with this effort." So I just wanted a shout out. So, thank you, good job.
Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Miller, and he's going to read our resolution.
I believe the Chair wanted to remind those who are present that the position this board is taking back on January the 16th, 2015, and she has asked me to read the resolution, which was unanimously adopted by the Manchester Board of Education. Whereas the Manchester City School system is an integral part of this community's local identity, having been established in 1905 by a private act of the Tennessee Legislature, and having served the citizens of Manchester for 110 years. And whereas, consolidation of Manchester City School system and Coffee County's school system has been a topic of recent discussion at the Manchester Board of Mayor and Alderman meetings, and whereas, the history, experience, and results of school district consolidation have been inconsistent and contradictory, and whereas, it has yet to be demonstrated that consolidation of Manchester City School system and the Coffee County's school system would improve operational efficiency, student opportunities, or save tax dollars. And whereas, there remains an overwhelming number of unanswered questions, such as continuation or elimination of teaching, support, administrative positions, continuation, or the continuance or elimination of certain educational programs, issues regarding pensions and retirement benefits, the ownership and use of school property, and potential tax implications, just to name a few, for which there are no answers or specifics on which to base an informed decision. And whereas, successful business consolidation practices do not always parallel with successful educational practices. Economy of scale often undermines teaching and learning. And whereas, there are other measures available that might improve physical efficiency or educational services. And whereas, the Manchester City School system remains financially viable, well-managed, and home to a unique community of exceptional students and capable staff, where educational opportunities take precedent over economic incentives, and where bigger is not always better. And whereas, the Board acknowledges the vast accomplishments and honors of the students, teachers, and schools within the Manchester City School system as presented by the Director on this day, and believes that such distinctions will be lost in the abolition of the Manchester City School system. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Manchester, Tennessee, to hereby oppose any plan or proposal to transfer, consolidate, or reorganize, which would result in the abolition of the Manchester City School system. Be it further resolved, the resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Education. Be it further resolved, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage to public welfare requiring at the 16th day of January, having been approved by a majority of the members of the Board of Education of Manchester, Tennessee.
All right, I'd like to thank you, everybody, for coming out, and we're going to adjourn.